All right, everybody. Hello and welcome to our November nineteenth meeting of Eureka City Council. I would like to start with a roll call.
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Mesner?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Here.
Councilmember Allison?
Here.
Councilmember Bragel?
Here.
All right. Would everybody please join me for the pledge of allegiance? Okay. And Mr. City Attorney, do we have a report out from closed session?
Mayor, no final actions were taken in closed session.
All righty, thank you very much. Oh, no. Pam? I left the proclamation on my desk. Could you grab it? I'm so sorry. While she's grabbing the proclamation off my desk, I will go ahead and give my mayor's announcement. I just returned this afternoon from San Francisco. I was meeting with a delegation with Innovate Norway and the Norwegian Council General to talk about economic development opportunities in Humboldt County. It was economic development folks and harbor folks talking about some of the things that are, we're going to be, we're looking at having it happen in the harbor, which includes the Nordic aqua farms and offshore wind, and any kind of business that could support that or could be supported if those should happen to grow. So it was a very informative session. Norway has a very strong aquaculture community, and they're very interested in what we have to offer here. And that was a really interesting project. I did miss the last council meeting because I was out of town at another economic development conference for my day job. That was the California Economic Summit. And that was an interesting, it was an interesting summit, but it also talked a lot about regions. And it really brought home that the Redwood region, which we kind of look at on the north coast, is included in sort of the state's version of northern California. So that's also Sierra Nevada and folks on the other side over at Redding. And so I'm really starting to think about how do we identify ourselves in that, in that region and get ourselves noticed on a state level so that we're not all piled in together all of the time. And what else is happening? There is going to be a conference on Thursday that I'm very excited about where we're going to have California Surgeon General Nadine Burke-Harris will be joining Senator McGuire to talk about ACEs in trauma-informed care for children in Humboldt County. It's going to be at the Sequoia Conference Center. I'm sure it's going to be very, very crowded, and it's going to be a very informative meeting. So if anybody's interested in that, that's going to be Thursday at six o'clock. And with that, I will read a proclamation. I'll move on to the other mayor's announcements, which is a proclamation for Artith Jill Stover. Whereas, the city of Eureka wishes to acknowledge the dedicated service and commitment of Jill Stover, recognizing outstanding service to citizens of Eureka. And whereas Jill Stover was born in East Grand Rapids, Michigan, on April twenty-third, nineteen thirty-three, and moved to Eureka in nineteen sixty-six with her family. And whereas, the Sequoia Park Zoo benefited from Ms. Stover's dedication, dedicated service to modernize the Sequoia Park Zoo and improve quality of life for all of its resident animals. And whereas Ms. Stover served her community in a variety of ways through her work at College of the Redwoods, outstanding eighteen gallon blood donor to the Northern California Blood Bank, participation with the California Redwoods Corral, and her longstanding dedication to the Christ Episcopal Church. And whereas Jill Stover served the city of Eureka for nearly forty years as a member of the Open Space Parks and Recreation Committee until her death. And whereas, the city of Eureka is a better place due to Jill Stover's dedicated support to the city and surrounding community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Susan Seaman, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby commend Jill Stover for her loyalty and lifetime of dedication to the cities, to the citizens of the city of Eureka. We extend our sincere appreciation for her many years of distinguished service to her community and offer our sincere condolences to the family of Artith Jill Stover. Is there anybody from Ms. Stover's family here? I would love to invite you to say a few words, and maybe, I know she's on the Open Spaces Committee, I don't want to put you on the spot, Miles, but if you would like to say a few words, that'd be great, too. Please.
Hello, my name is Ward Stover, formerly of City of Eureka. I'm, I'm a resident of Crescent City. In fact, your city attorney's office is right across the street from mine. This is quite an honor. On behalf of Jill's family, it was an honor for her to have been asked for advice for forty years, and she was real proud of the city. Think one of the closing thoughts that I have is, I was walking in the, in the hallway and, and saw the Coast Guard City USA signs. I don't know if anybody knew Jill, but before moving to California, she was raised and worked for six years for the Grand Haven Chamber of Commerce. Grand Haven is the original Coast Guard City USA. So she's, she's seen it at both ends of, of the United States. This is quite an honor, and I appreciate you recognizing her for her forty-plus years of service to the city and community.
Thank you so much. I've got something for you.
I apologize for my attire. I just wanted to make Davis look good, but I didn't plan on coming up here tonight, but um...
I really put you on the spot.
That's fine. Jill was great. Jill, I've been a part of the Open Space Park and Recreation Commission back to my days when I was in Public Works. Jill was never endless contributor to the OSPR. She's, you know, was a part, really main part of the expansion of the zoo in the early years. Definitely was a huge advocate for recreation and for our programming. She always contributed to our Halloween events and our Easter events, whether it be through financial means or also donating candy and her time to help us participate with that. She was really my kind of person. She was very upfront and told you what you needed to hear, and so we will definitely miss her, and we really appreciate all her years of service.
Thank you, Miles.
Thank you.
All right. It's lovely to have people who dedicate so much to the city. There are, there are some wonderful folks out there, and it's, it's nice to appreciate them. With that, I will move on to our presentations, and I believe we have an update on our student, student leadership program.
Well, good evening, council. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Ciara Jenkins, and I'm the Assistant Environmental Coordinator for Eco-Eureka, which is our environmental program through the Community Services Department. And I am also now the coordinator for Eureka's new youth council. It is an internship. This program is designed to encourage Eureka teens to get excited and interested in city government. And it's going to start in January twenty-twenty, so just around the corner. So what is Eureka Youth Council? Well, it's going to be a small group of young adults that will have this unique opportunity to learn not only about their local government while representing Eureka's youth population, but in an effort to create positive change for youth in Eureka. Teens will participate in city council meetings and be given the opportunity to speak on pre-chosen agenda items. So why youth, you may be asking? Well, youth live, work, and play in our community just like adults do. So it's important for them to know that their voice and opinions matter. Youth have different perspectives and experiences than adults, so they're essential to creating a full picture of a community's needs. Youth need more opportunities to be inspired, to feel empowered, and to get real-world learning. So what's required? Members will have to be in the ages of fourteen to eighteen. Applications were due today, and we did get several of them, so we're very excited about that. Four members will be selected to serve, and it will run from January through May. Members are expected to commit a total of three meetings per month, and then a third meeting of the month, they will actually be coming to a Eureka City Council meeting, and we'll talk more about that. So who is it for? Well, those youth that are interested or concerned about decisions being made in Eureka, those who want to represent and raise awareness of the thoughts, feelings, and problems of Eureka's youth, those who want to be involved with the community, develop important life skills, participate in team building, and those who are driven, dedicated, responsible, and enthusiastic. If we could find someone with all those qualities, that would be ideal. So recruitment, interviews, and orientation. So what have we done so far? Recruitment, I did several presentations, including some at Saint Bernard's and Eureka High. Social media, we have flyers posted throughout the city. We had a press release and media coverage, and I went on three radio stations to talk about youth council as well. So interviews, the interview process will begin in December, and youth council will officially be selected the week of December sixteenth. And then we're going to have our orientation, which is going to be Tuesday, January seventh, from four-thirty to six. That's going to be the set time on Tuesdays when I have meetings with the youth council. And for the first one, we are requesting a few city council members, if a few of you could take part and kind of give the, the students, the youth, a little more inside things that we personally wouldn't be able to tell them. So if any of you guys are interested in that, I'll be reaching out, and if we can have someone join that orientation, that would be wonderful. So when I was doing these presentations, I was trying to, you know, tell, tell the youth, why should they care about city council? Well, I was trying to explain to them that no matter what their current or future job is, or maybe what they're interested in, or where they live, that city council decisions and government decisions can affect their quality of life. It can affect their family, their health, maybe their business, their neighborhood, their freedom, and so on. So if they care about any of that, maybe that would be a good reason to care about city council. So what will participating in youth council look like? So like I said, we're going to have a monthly schedule, three meetings a month. The first one is going to be agenda proposals. So the coordinator, myself, I'll select and present the youth council with an agenda or action item that was declared by a certain department within the city. So maybe the Community Services Department says, hey, we want to put a new park over here. And then the city, the youth council will then discuss how that agenda or action item might affect local youth, beneficial or problematic. And then they're going to develop a proposal based on that agenda, agenda or action item. Meeting two will be council prep day. That's when we're going to research and develop materials. I did go over with them how important it is to have data and research to back up whatever request or proposal they're going to be making. So the second meeting in the month is when we're really going to gather a lot of information to support whatever we want to introduce to you guys. Meeting three, so that's the entire Eureka Youth Council is expected to be at the second city council meeting of the month. One member of youth council will have been pre-chosen. They're going to rotate each month, so everyone will get the opportunity, hopefully, to be upon the dais with you guys, sit there, and have the opportunity to present their proposal. And then following the agenda topic, discuss with the city council meeting. Youth council will then assess how the meeting went, what they've learned throughout the month, and how they feel the experience shaped their outlook on city politics. Another thing I noticed when I was doing these presentations, I would just ask the classes, and I did them for sophomores, juniors, and seniors, and only a select few of them had ever even been to a city council meeting. It was like one in thirty usually. So I think it'll be really interesting to get the kids in here, not only just being at a meeting, but get them involved and working with you guys and, you know, see it from a different point of view. So that's a wrap-up of the Eureka Youth Council internship. So thank you for listening, and any questions?
Natalie? I'm sorry. Councilperson Arroyo?
I'm okay with it. I imagine I'm not the only one who's noticing this, but unfortunately, right on the first and third Tuesday of the month, we almost always have closed session before our meeting, so that starts at five. So if perhaps a different orientation could be chosen, a time when we're not already going to be in our closed session meeting, then I personally would love to participate in helping with orientation.
Oh, definitely. I think for the orientation that that's not totally set in stone. If you guys are all going to be busy during that time, and we, of course, want you to participate with that first orientation, so that's probably something we could, we could...
What date is it?
It is the seventh.
Okay.
So yes, I think we can work around that.
Following Tuesday potentially, or I don't know if there's any flexibility, but anyway, just noting that while that would have been a really good time since we're going to probably be in closed session, that won't be.
Perfect. Thank you so much for letting us, letting us know that, yeah, we can get that figured out for sure.
Yeah, and it sounds like a really exciting opportunity. I can't wait.
So I've done a lot of research on why young people leave or don't come back to rural communities, and one of the top reasons is they felt like they were never asked to have any input. In fact, sixty-four percent of the respondents said they were never asked what they, what people thought, what they thought about the community they lived in. So this is a really strong message to our, to the people who grew up in our community that they matter and that they can make a difference in their own community. So I am very happy about it as well. Councilman Castellano?
We, we could, you know, if, if rescheduling doesn't work, come to like the first half hour, you know, of that day, if that makes it easier. But also, would it be possible to, let's say there's, you know, something in the city that comes up that we feel particularly applies to youth, would it be possible to bring questions or projects or ideas to the council as well?
Yes, definitely. And then prior to me meeting with them, I can always touch base with you guys, or if you see something coming up, you can always contact me and say, hey, this is on the agenda. Don't overlook it. It could be really good for this or that. Yeah, I am more than willing, we're gonna, you know, this is all new to everyone that's participating, so any feedback or suggestions you have would be great.
Thank you. Councilmember Gal?
So thanks for putting this together. I'm curious, how many candidates? And did you reach out to Courtland Community School in Zobarnum?
I didn't do any presentations there. I actually dropped off some paperwork at Zobarnum in the front, but priority was Eureka High and Saint Bernard's, and then we had a really short turnaround because initially someone else from the department that isn't there anymore actually left. So then it kind of came up, hey, Ciara, do you want to do it? And I, I got this together and was getting it out there, and I think we really, it was only like two weeks, two or three weeks, so. But yes, we've gotten in like nine or ten applications so far across the ages from fifteen up to eighteen, so.
That's wonderful. Well, I'm sure that your enthusiasm and your contagious positive attitude will be of great benefit to these guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
All right. Anything else? Thank you so much. We're all looking forward to meeting our new youth council. I know you've been looking forward to it for a long time.
And I'm super excited that you guys are excited. So thank you so much.
And before we move on to the next one, I did forget that I was going to say during my mayor's announcements that I really want to give a shout-out to our engineering and Public Works Department for the work that they did over on Myrtle Avenue and Seventh. I've never seen something that disrupted the community that so many people thanked me for. I have people still coming up to me and stopping me and saying, whoever did that, it was really convenient, it didn't slow them down at all. So good work, guys. And, and it's nice to be appreciated for the kind of stuff you face every day, and people don't really recognize how you're constantly problem-solving. But that one was big and visible, and you really stood up and, and showed what we're made of, so I thought that was awesome, and I wanted to make sure I said that before we moved on to the next part of our meeting, which is public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. If you notice, the public hearing has been continued, a public hearing for the housing element update has been continued. So if you're here for that, public comment time would be the time to speak. Everybody has three minutes, and is anybody here to speak on public comment? Oh, we have, we have some names.
Yes, so the first, first person is James Graham, followed by Harry Wilcox and Cornelius Lowenstein.
Good evening, council mayor. My name's James Graham. I'd just like to say the city of Eureka's got a lot of homeless drug addicts. Looks like a bunch of zombies coming out of the hills when I'm driving up one oh one, right where they're building the new In-N-Out and the Chipotle. They're living up on the hillside, and might as well call them caves, they're really cold words. I don't know what the answer is to it, but we've got a lot of drug addicts in Humboldt County. They're homeless, that don't want any help, they choose to be homeless, that's the way they want to live because they don't want to follow any rules. I was just looking on Google to see what your guys' duties and responsibilities and capabilities are, and one of them is to address the public's concerns and to come up with committees to figure out all this stuff. And, I mean, we're here twice a month talking about the same thing, and I don't see anything getting done about it. Hatcher's doing whatever they want, they've got drug addicts running the place, they've admitted they're on drugs, helping people hand out syringes, and that's unacceptable to me. And hopefully whoever sees this on the civic channel or anywhere else, and I'm not trying to be mean to anybody here. I, you know, I like all of you. I just seen the mayor at the zoo, said hi, it was nice to her. I've always been respectful, but we got a problem here in Eureka, and it's the hub of the problem in Humboldt County, and I don't see anybody doing anything about it. I mean, can't you guys get together and try to figure out something to do?
Well, the very end of the meeting, I think we're going to have a report about some stuff that's been done about it.
Oh, that would be nice. And like I say, I'm not being disrespectful or mean to anybody here, but something's got to be done. We've got to work together, and I sent you a link and Mrs. Bragel a link, if you feel like looking at it on your messenger later. Take the gander at it, see what you think about it. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I'm sure you all know me by now. I'm Harry Wilcox. Recently got out of hospital on Thursday, and laying in the hospital, I was thinking about what I'd been doing to improve my town, which is every day I go in Cooper's Gulch and pick up needles and feces and whatever happens to be around. And I've noticed that Ross Park is now becoming a campground after twelve. I take my dog out for a walk every night, which is how I ended up in the hospital, but that's a long story. And there was three people sleeping under the big slide, the back part of the wall was like a climbing wall, and they were sleeping there. I called the non-emergency number. Obviously, I know you guys are, the PV is busy, and they've got a lot of important calls, but when I ask someone to move and they get feisty with me, I'm not going to stand there and fight with them, and that's why I called the non-emergency number, so that, you know, he said he's aware of what's going on. Cooper's has also got a very large, whether people know this or not, camp there. It's a regular camp. I can name people I know who are living there because they lost their apartment, and they choose it's easier to live there, and now it's becoming a drug den. And we have two empty houses on Tenth, which is next to me, and I'm worried about people breaking in there and using them as squats, if you will. And I'm worried, you know, I know the chief and the PV and the captains, and they're all working their butts off, but it would be nice if we get a little more patrol in that area around those two parks, because now that the weather's changing, you're seeing more of homeless, I won't say drug-addicted, I have no idea, but I see homeless, and people choose to be that way. Kim, we, you and I worked on fixing that park up, and within two weeks, they were camping under the slides. You know, and you're going over there every morning, Public Works breaks their butt keeping that place clean. I go in there after them, it's still clean up. And you guys, you know, we love this town, we, this is a pretty beautiful place, but the homeless, the squatters, the garbage has got to stop. We've got to bring back some sort of civic pride because it doesn't seem like people care anymore. Well, I do, and I mean, I'm not supposed to be out there picking up trash because I end up in the hospital, as I'm sure Austin's seen my heartbeat, but, you know, let's work together, let's get this solved. I mean, this yelling and hollering and beating each other up is doing nothing. I would like to meet with you and you. I've tried, I've met with everybody else, so, yeah, well, I call, they're busy. So if you can get ahold of me on my Facebook, I'd appreciate it. You know, I'll set up a date, I'll get a ride over here, and we'll have a meeting. And I thank you.
I know, I'm always supposed to be friendly and find nice words. Eh, can't find them, though. Deaf, dumb, blind, muttering, and mute, that's how the infamous five up there present themselves to us, the citizens. Marie Antoinette-like hubris, agenda-driven, aka hell-bent, to make Eureka a prime example for the failed state and status of California. The numbers are out there, people leaving the sinking ship. If Seattle is dying, Eureka is drowning, and you're at the helm of MS Eureka, who had hit the meth burg. All we hear from you is "de-stigmatize and integrate," which translates to "hold still, hold on to your ankles, kumbaya, more to come, looting hordes of doom and their vandalism, arson, assault, ODs, and needle litter make for valuable community members." I call that Burgalian deflection by now. Latest homemade PR disaster, the survey and response of its findings by Eddie Alexander. To tell us we'd suffer from a low self-esteem, our problems wouldn't be unique to the area, and none of the concerns expressed would be new news is a prime example for that, for how removed and arrogant you are and how you perpetuate your failed approaches. The ticking time bombs that stagger through Old and Downtown, the stabbings, the open drug consumption all over the place, every public space has been taken over and thoroughly ruined by those that came here to loot and get away with all of that. Death, decay, and destruction are the fruits of harm reduction in this town, and we are all overburdened by any yardstick with its fallout. Halverson Park, Samoa Bridge, the whole waterfront for that matter, Old and Downtown, Broadway, the library, all taken over and in a stranglehold by Sister Morphine and her entourage. The trail system is famous for its stabbing and muggings. People that live along it have to fend off the nightly onslaught. The PG&E power outage could have led to total mayhem, and future outages might. Step up or step aside. It's time to make Eureka safe again and to put Eureka first.
Our next three speakers are Anne White, Bonnie Pinkney, and Gary Lewis.
Hi, my name is Anne White, and I live in Eureka, and I'm here to voice concern, concern about the sighting of the Betty Chin's homeless bayfront apartment complex on the Crowley site. And I want to know, what is the date for the coastal amendment and the coastal development permit, and when is the meeting? I am concerned about the environmental impacts to wildlife and wetlands. I oppose the project. The Crowley property is the wrong site for the project.
My name is Gary Lewis. My family and I live at 301 P Street next to a needle distribution center known as Hatcher. Our neighborhood has undergone dramatic changes during the past six months, specifically a large increase in drug dealers and drug users, many, many sleeping on the Hatcher premises or nearby. On August sixth, I and two other neighbors had one conversation with the new director of Hatcher to express our concerns. The next day, signs were posted saying, "Our neighbors are confronting me daily. Our program is at risk." All that... All that afternoon and evening, four men stood in the Hatcher lot watching our house, making threatening gestures to say, "I'm watching you," to myself and my family. The previous director of Hatcher had pointed these men out to me, warning me that they were the hardcore dealers and extremely dangerous. Drug dealers are the first-line defenders of Hatcher. Why? Because they're making huge profits off of Hatcher's clients. The next week, Hatcher was closed and our neighborhood looked like a ghost town. No dealers, no addicts. Hatcher is open just 12 hours a week. During the remaining hours, we see their workers living in vehicles on-site, selling drugs at all hours, dealers cruising the Hatcher and library parking lots, and addicts living around the Hatcher building. The new director of Hatcher tells us that behavior problems after hours are not her problem. Her response to a dealer driving through their lot was, "It looks like he's just visiting friends." When a neighbor recently called the police on a group of dealers and users in front of her house, they smashed the windshield of his car as soon as she left her home. They are not afraid to use violence and I have spoken with neighbors who are, for the first time in their lives, sleeping with guns next to their beds out of fear. How could this have happened? I'm sorry to say that it's because this council made it happen. No other business is allowed to operate free of regulations and oversight in this fashion. This council has ensured that there will be no regulations, no public input, no meaningful review and a city code crafted to avoid impact on Hatcher. That code states that they cannot operate within 1,000 feet of a public school. In just a few months, three to five-year-olds will be attending a Head Start school 500 feet from Hatcher. Will this council protect those children or will it protect the drug dealers? We are asking the council to take a few minutes to enact effective policy to protect the lives of children while saving thousands of dollars in police work. This council has a simple choice, continue to stand alongside the drug dealers or stand alongside the residents of Eureka. Work with us today, please. Every visitor to Eureka stops by the Carson House and many take the time to walk around the backside through our neighborhood and right past Hatcher. Think about it. Thank you.
Did we have, oh, okay. Hey, Bonnie?
Yeah, I kinda wanted to go after Gary because it kinda plays on him, but I, the devastation of our neighborhood has just begun. The car window smashed was mine. I don't know the thought process, if there was any at all, that went into the decision to place a drug-centered organization in the middle of a residential neighborhood, one block from a children's library, one block from a Head Start program and right in front of a school bus stop. The only reasoning that I could see of why this location was chosen was that it wouldn't be in the decision-makers neighborhoods where their children had to catch the bus. As a result, Eureka is going to be spending tens of thousands, perhaps hundreds of thousands of dollars in fencing anything that's worth more than two nickels and thousands of dollars worth of security systems, just so that the patrons of this drug organization can exercise their rights and be free to roam the city undisturbed. So now, any tourists that come to Eureka, what they're gonna see, that is, after stepping over human excrement, dodging capless needles, dropped mare feet from the disposal receptacles, is going to be a city of fences. Is that how we want to promote this city as a city of fences? Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie. Do we have any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I, we do.
Actually, I wanted to talk about the housing element. About a year ago, I contacted HCD because you all, the, you all had undone something that the previous housing element had done. And I was very concerned about it. There was some back and forth and she sent me the comments of, of the previous staff that, who's now no longer here. And I gave her some information, some more information. And she wrote me back encouraging me to become involved in the sixth, in the housing element and gave me some timeframe and indicated there should be several public meetings held where you can voice your concerns. In addition, you may want to contact the Housing Advisory Board and told me when they meet and they're, I had already been attending the Housing Advisory Board. The Housing Advisory Board has not met for the last two months because there was nothing on, for their agenda. And yet, you're talking about the housing element. It's, that's disconcerting. It's not, you know, I don't know what to say about it. It is, public participation is part of the housing element and it's a very important part of the housing element. I had a couple of other things, but I won't go there now. Because I want to address some of what they're saying and there are concerns. On one hand, I can say that partly is how you respond to people and if you are complaining about people existing someplace, they're gonna get angry at you. If you treat people rudely, they're gonna be rude back. So I just, word to the wise, I think I've mentioned once before that in my neighborhood, we've had two incidences and it was mostly the way that people reacted to the people and then they just escalate. So, well, I'm sure it's uncomfortable having people sleeping around there and stuff. A little human compassion, being a drug addict is not an easy life. And not all the people there are drug addicts. People, the friends of, of the people come there. I wish you all well.
Okay. Do we have any other public comment? Please come up.
Hello, my name is Jade Amber Felicia Earl and I, in the past, for the past almost 28 years, I've been homeless off and on, whether through my own means or my mom being not able to pay rent. And just like that woman said, compassion goes a long ways. People that sit up on a panel and judge people because they think that they want to be this way or that they chose the hard life of being a drug addict or that the only easy way that they seem to have a means of making money is to be a drug dealer, it's not right. Now, like, I try to pay it forward. I do unnecessary community service along with other people that have, yeah, it's not our job to pick up other people's paraphernalia left behind or dirty cum rags or whatever it is. But if you are aggressive to people, people are going to be aggressive with you. So what I try to do is I try to look back, think, maybe this person has had a bad day, maybe their loved one passed away or somebody took their kid, whether it's the father or the city, whoever it may be. And we do need to find a place for the homeless people to go so they can have a place where they feel comfortable to not explode and cause chaos. And for as long as I've lived homeless for the past six years, seven years lately in Eureka, there's always been something happening at the library or down by the mall or somewheres. It's everywhere you go. It's all about how you make it better. And we shouldn't just point the finger and say, "This is what's bad." What are we going to do to make it better? Everyone, as an equal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Seeing none, I will come back to our agenda. As I mentioned, the housing element update has been continued until the December 3rd meeting, so we will discuss that or we will hear more about that then. And I will move on to the consent calendar. Was there anything anybody wanted to pull from the calendar? That was what I expected. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you very much. And now we are going to move on to ordinances and resolutions and I would like to invite Director Gervin to come up and talk about the California Building Standards Code.
Right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a little bit of background on the code adoption process. Codes are adopted at the state level every three years. Most of them are based on national model codes, though some are developed and written solely by state agencies. The primary entities that are involved in that code adoption process are the Building Standards Commission, the Department of Housing and Community and Development, the Division of the State Architect, the Office of the State Fire Marshal and the Energy Commission. And it's kind of interesting, right now, we're talking about adopting the 2019 California Building Standards Codes that will go into effect in 2020. And they're currently beginning the next triennial adoption process, talking about the 22 codes that'll go into effect in 2023. With this cycle, as in 2016, the changes are somewhat incremental in most cases. There are two exceptions, however, that I think are particularly significant. First is in the energy code where there's a new requirement that solar photovoltaic systems be installed on what are called low-rise residential buildings. Any new multifamily or single-family structure that's three stories or less in height. And there are a few exceptions to the requirement, but in general, most new residential buildings will have these. The size of the system is based on the climate zone, the size of the structure and the number of units. And using an example of a 1,600 square foot, uh, single-family residence with accessory dwelling unit in Eureka, based on our climate zone, you'd be looking at a 3.8 kilowatt system. So relatively substantial system, based on an installed cost, kind of a benchmark of $3.50 per watt, you're looking at a system cost of just over $13,000. So it will increase that initial cost of construction, but the thought is that it adds value to the home, you know, in the case of a developer building that as a spec home. Or if it's an owner-occupant, then that cost will be paid back in decreased energy costs over time. The second noteworthy change is in the residential code where Appendix Q gives flexibility for tiny homes on foundations. And there's been some discussion of this through the housing element process. It's applicable to structures less than 400 square feet and it lays out alternative provisions for lofts and ladders and things like that that make tiny homes kind of tricky from a code standpoint. So it, it, it's not actually required to be adopted by the city because unlike other appendices, this was adopted by the state. But because we've talked about it in the housing element and because we want to point out the city's commitment to tiny homes as an alternate method of providing housing units, staff is recommending that you do adopt it specifically. As far as local amendments go, the California Health and Safety Code states that local governments may amend the state Building Standards Code for use in their jurisdiction, provided that findings are made, that the amendments are necessary because of local climatic, geological or topographical conditions and that the local amendments must be more restrictive than the standard codes. Staff has proposed some minor amendments to both the building code and the residential code. The amendments mirror regulations that are already in effect, but they have to be made with each code adoption cycle. For instance, the minimum ground floor elevation requirement has been in the municipal code for, since 1984. The expressed findings for these amendments are contained in the two attached resolutions. You'll find staff's recommendation in the printed agenda summary. I really apologize, it's quite a mouthful. I think anyone who reads this one should get a prize, but I'm available to answer any questions if you have them.
Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Orio?
Could you highlight the local specific items for the public?
Sure. So the, the changes in the, that are common to both the residential code and the building code have to do with minimum floor elevation and they require that the minimum ground floor elevation of any new building or enlargements is 12 and a half feet, based on city datum. There are a few exceptions to that. They're subject to review by the Director of Public Works. And then in the building code, you have both of that and some address identification requirements that are different from state codes, larger numbers basically.
Thank you. And can I ask for the, like, the solar, is that gonna be in effect for, like, remodels and stuff or is it just new properties? You said new.
Just new construction, yep.
So if somebody adds an ADU, they're not gonna have, be forced to put it on their house too?
That's correct. There could be a situation where the ADU on its own could be large enough to trigger the requirement, but it depends upon the size of the structure.
Any other questions? Do we have any comments from the audience on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back for comments.
My, my comments with, with the California Building Standards Code is to consider building upon it for energy efficiency and reducing carbon footprints. The city of Arcata has implemented in their building code that all new developments would require electric heat pumps or mini splits in developments compared to natural gas heaters, which, which I think is really important in trying to address climate change and reducing carbon footprints. Right now, on the, on the California grid, about 47% of our energy supply is being, is natural gas right now, which is releasing about 20,000 pounds of carbon into the atmosphere each hour to power California. That is not even considered, many homes, heating their homes with natural gas right now, which is also releasing carbon into the atmosphere. So I would just like to make a friendly amendment or consideration to the building standard codes who require electric heat pumps over natural gas heaters, including the replacement of, of existing heating systems unless a hardship is noted. I think heat pumps are really great technology. They keep getting more efficient and they're, most of the time, not any more expensive than a natural gas heater system. And what's cool with them is, say with mini splits, you can heat only sections of your home compared to your whole house, which makes it a lot more energy efficient for the resident of these homes as well. A heat pump, you know, could heat most of your home for like the equivalent of four incandescent light bulbs. So really wonder what, anyone else thinks of that or if you can continue this discussion?
Councilmember Orio?
Well, I really like the idea of that and I'm aware that they're much more efficient. I think there are some properties where that wouldn't be feasible, but you know, depending on the logistical, you know, realities of the property, maybe they'll have gas to a site, but you know, I mean, I guess everyone's gonna have electricity in their house, but I, I just wonder if there are instances where people wouldn't, wouldn't be able for whatever reason or wouldn't prefer to use that form of heating and whether there's a way to incentivize it rather than forbid that people have natural gas heaters. I mean, I understand that's how you get, you, you get a much higher rate of change by requiring it, but I wonder if Director Gervin could speak to, like, ways that we might incentivize it or what some of the considerations there might be.
As far as incentives go, I'm having a hard time thinking of any off the top of my head. I mean, about the only incentive we can give when it comes to building regulations, especially for something as, as relatively straightforward as a, a mechanical permit, would be a permit fee waiver. And I don't think that's going to be, you know, when you're talking about a $130 permit for this kind of a project, I don't think it's gonna be much of an incentive. Beyond that, not thinking anything off the top of my head, but you know, there are moves across the state to not just, as, as Councilmember Allison is proposing, to to have mini splits mandated instead of forced air units or, you know, natural gas forced air units, but also to do complete electrification of new homes and require no natural gas, basically, cooking or otherwise. So we are seeing that become more prevalent this year in particular. But staff recommends evaluating exactly how effective those programs are and the implications of them over a period of time. And perhaps consider them after they've been in effect for a year, and we can come back to council with some information from other jurisdictions and what they've encountered.
Councilwoman Messner? Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to respond to that. I can just imagine instances, and frankly, the best lens that I can think of this through is renovating my own mother-in-law unit for my mother. And planning for that and thinking about how the main house panel is almost maxed out. And so the cost of adding, you know, adding more capacity is pretty great. And so weighing that, and I can imagine that other people might be, you know, considering adding another housing unit, but might not, for whatever reason, have the capacity to electrify, you know, the whole unit. And, you know, while I am in the position of being able to do that, I imagine some people wouldn't, and I wouldn't want it to be a barrier to creating more housing in Eureka, because we're so, we're really pushing to make, you know, create more housing. And now we have this added energy efficiency requirement and solar requirement, which I think is wonderful. But I just wouldn't want to create any more barriers. So I wonder if the, you know, City of Arcata's ordinance was well-received, if in other communities, that has been a consideration, or whether that's seen as a potential barrier for construction of additional housing. And I'm thinking of my particular instance and how, you know, it's feasible for me, but other people in my situation might not, you know, that might limit them from pursuing a project.
So, and even a developer who might be able to afford to do it, then somebody can't afford to buy the house they're building. So, but first, Councilwoman Messner, then you.
Yeah, and interestingly, I know that this has come up in, there's another city, Berkeley, actually, who did this. And there was a group of people who were discussing this in Eureka recently, and how I think that will come back to bite them later. And after all of the, after the power outages and everything that happened, how restaurants and places that maybe normally would have gas and could have cooked and could have done some of their, could have actually done some of the things that they would normally do, how that actually affected, you know, would affect them, and how will this play out in the future? So I think it's something to be smart about and think through, like, just not just riding the wave to see where it goes, but looking before, you know, giving it a chance to see if there's any repercussions before we just make some blanket.
Councilwoman Allison, then Castellano, then Bergel.
I'm not talking about a complete electrification of homes, you know, and I'm talking about new developments. But, you know, fact of the matter is, is say, you already have forced air heating for your home. Say you're on, you know, a 20-amp breaker dedicated to that. You could just, you know, take that, take that electrical supply and repurpose it for electric heat pump. They're not that energy-intensive. So really, it's just a sort of swapping out one technology for another. And it will be cheaper for people overall to use electric heat pumps compared to a natural gas furnace for their homes. And yeah, I don't want to be a barrier to building more housing either, but at the same time, I'm just sort of terrified of climate change. And I feel like we just need to try and do everything we can in our powers to try and reduce everyone's effects. And if a new development could not put in a forced air heating system using natural gas, I think that would be really important and sort of help lead the way and the charge. And like I said, these systems aren't very expensive. You know, they're about equal in regards to a natural gas furnace. So I think it's something we should at least consider and look at. But also, at the same time, I don't want to, you know, just keep kicking the can down the road either. I think it's an important step towards resiliency for our future and considering, yeah, the power shut-offs and things like that. You know, it really sucks. But at the same time, people who had forced air heating using natural gas, they couldn't heat their homes during the power shut-offs either, because that required electricity to push that air around. So electric heat pump or natural gas furnace, regardless of the power shut-off, really doesn't matter too much. They're going to be without it one way or another. Unless they have battery storage on-site.
Councilwoman Castellano?
I would support just looking, having a more detailed report about how we can create more green building policies within our Building Code, whether it be electric heat pumps or other means. Is that something that we could bring back in six to eight months or something like that? Does that seem realistic or less? I don't know.
Can I recommend that we ask the Energy Committee to bring some recommendations forward to us? I think that they would probably appreciate being asked to provide us with recommendations on that, and that they, of course, they would work with staff. And just to clarify, can we adopt additional modifications at any time? Okay. Great. I would enjoy having them look into it and hear about that.
I'm sorry, we jumped you.
We did. We're next.
So I'm curious, at the desk upstairs, when people are applying for these permits, is there any education that goes with that? I mean, is any of this information that Austin and Councilmember Allison is bringing forward, is that even being talked about at the desk with people currently?
No, currently, it's not. But typically, the people who are coming in to get permits for furnace change-outs are contractors. It's not typically an owner-builder situation. It's just not the type of work that's conducive to an owner-builder doing the work. So typically, no, because, you know, the contractor's pulling the permit. Now, we have seen an increase in the number of mini-split permits that come through as compared to typical natural gas-fueled forced air units. I will say that that's been changing over the past few years, seeing more of them.
I'm just curious. It just feels like information, education, when people come across the desk, is a big piece of this. If people don't know that it's available, or they don't understand the impacts, then they may not consider it. Secondly, I would be interested, as Councilmember Castellano said, I would be interested in doing some research about this and really see how we can minimalize impacts with a lot of these things that are going on, whether that's through our own Energy Commission here with the city or that's through Redwood Energy. Yeah, Redwood Energy Authority, whatever that looks like. But I think if we had a good timeline, it would give us more information to base our decision on. Currently, I don't, I don't think I have enough information to make a decision that I'm going to just go with it. I'd like to know more. So I agree with that recommendation. I'd like to see more information. And I would like to see more education at the desk. I think that, you know, word of mouth, that we don't give it enough credence. I think, you know, we think that it may be it's social media, or maybe it's, you know, flyers and those types of things. But I think sometimes it's person-to-person that really can make a positive impact in these areas. So.
And if council wants, I can have Redwood Coast Energy Authority, some staff members come out and give a presentation on energy efficiency and how that can really reduce footprints. So for example, people even with natural gas furnaces, they might have leaky systems where they're, you know, heating under their home or heating the outside versus heating their home, which, you know, hampers efficiency and increased costs and.
I'm wondering if they could do a workshop with the Energy Committee and have them sit down together and maybe start those discussions?
Sure.
Councilmember Gallo?
So I agree. I think it would be good to have that, but I also would like to have the research. I would like to have the data to be able to look at it and to be able to go over it. And I realize it's a process, so I, you know, I don't think the timeline's tomorrow, but certainly, you know, by mid-year, calendar year would be great.
And so it sounds like we have consensus that we would like to further discuss green energies. Can we just do that on consensus, give you direction, and then we'll go back to the actual motion for the Building Codes? Councilwoman Araya?
I'll wave reading, read by title only, and introduce bill number, I want to get this prize. Bill number 973-TACCS, An Ordinance of the City of Eureka, amending. Wait, can I just do staff recommendation, or is there a reason I need to read it all?
You do need to read on an ordinance, the entirety. Everything else is recommendation.
Okay.
You said 973?
I'm looking at, the first one is 973. There's multiple.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay. And so I'll continue where I left off. 973-TACCS, An Ordinance of the City of Eureka, amending Eureka Municipal Code Title 15, Chapter 150, including Sections 150.002 and 150.015 through 150.030, adopting by reference the 2019 additions of the California Building Standards Code and related model codes with appendices and amendments all relating to building regulations. And wave reading, read by title only, and introduce bill number 974-TACCS, An Ordinance of the City of Eureka, amending Eureka Municipal Code Title 9, Chapter 92, including Section 92.01 through 92.07, adopting by reference the 2019 addition of the California Fire Code and related model code with appendices and amendments all relating to fire regulations, and adopt a resolution of the City Council setting forth findings with respect to local climatic, geological, or topographical considerations, which make certain modifications and changes of the California Residential Code reasonably necessary, and adopt a resolution of the City Council setting forth findings with respect to local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions which make certain modifications and changes to the California Building Code reasonably necessary.
I'll second, and you can breathe now, Councilmember Araya.
All in favor?
I think, yeah, I think I breathed. It's like singing.
Did y'all vote?
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Director Gervin. And now I'd like to bring you back to discuss a procurement ordinance update.
Okay, thank you. Since the last updated the city's procurement process in 2017, your staff and your legal counsel have noticed several inconsistencies internal to the municipal code and between the EMC and the procurement policy. Those inconsistencies, along with ongoing changes in state law, largely having to do with public works projects, have created the need to update the EMC's provisions governing public works projects and the procurement of goods and services. So this bill would completely replace the current purchasing system in the municipal code. And if adopted, it would do a few key things. It would create a clean tie between the municipal code and the charter and the language there governing public works projects. It would set public works contract thresholds at those that are established by the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. And then it would update to those new amounts as that act changes periodically. It would establish due process for the determination of responsibility of bidders on public works projects. And it would separate the processes for the procurement of goods and services, which are currently combined with one another in the municipal code. So this, this bill was prepared with a lot of input from your staff and Mr. Black and Ms. Luna, as well as outside counsel specializing in public contract law. And we believe it's up to date with current statutory and regulatory requirements regarding public contracting and procurement. And the staff from every department has reviewed it and believe that it's consistent with current best practices. So should the bill ultimately be adopted, staff will return to council with an updated version of the procurement policy to make sure it's consistent with the new code requirements. And I apologize that because this is pretty much a wholesale change to the ordinance, having like an underlying strike-through version of it really wasn't practical. When we first got it in that format, it was almost impossible to read. So just rest assured, it's pretty much starting over from scratch, though, as highlighted in one of the agenda review responses today, the language in some sections is pretty similar to the current provisions, and it just, it has a different sort of flavor to it. So if you've got any questions, I can try to answer them.
Any questions? Seeing none, I will invite the audience. If you have any questions or comments about this item? Seeing none, I will come back for comment. Councilwoman Castellano?
I appreciate that you're updating the procurement policy, so thank you for that. These kinds of things, I think, are really just important to the day-to-day, week-to-week city work that you all do, that we all do. I did appreciate the section on prevailing wages there. And though I think this policy shall remain as is, something, you know, and I brought this up in comments earlier that I'm just interested in looking into, is how we look at labor in general, you know, like, union-made or union labor in terms of policies around that. So that's something, you know, I know that there's some research to be done on that, but I would like to continue that research.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
I'll make the motion.
All right.
All right. Sorry, my voice is, I'll do a short one. I'll go ahead and wave reading, read by title only, and introduce bill number 965-CS, An Ordinance of the City of Eureka, amending Title III, Chapter 39, Sections 39.35 through 39.51 of the Eureka Municipal Code, Municipal Code Procurement.
Second that.
Thank you, all in favor?
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next up, I would like to invite, I don't know what your title is right now, Swan. Ms. Asbury, who's our Economic Development Person. Human. Doing great work. And to talk about the Cultural Arts District Street Tree Master Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm presenting the Cultural District Street Tree Master Plan, which is Keep Eureka Beautiful's plan to plant trees in Eureka Cultural Arts District. So this is a reminder of our cultural district, showing you the outline and location. It's 69 blocks. A few partners worked on this together. Keep Eureka Beautiful, Eureka Main Street, the Ink People, and the city. The program is for if a property owner would like a tree, the cost per tree is $75. Volunteers will do the planting, and the property owner must water and maintain the tree. There's a lot of advantages of street trees, some of which shoppers will spend 9% to 12% more for goods and services in central business districts having high-quality tree canopy. Shoppers indicate that they will travel a greater distance and a longer time to visit a district having high-quality trees and spend more time there once they arrive. Businesses on treescapes streets show 12% higher income streams. Realtor-based estimates of street trees versus non-street tree comparable streets relayed a $15,000 to $20,000 increase in business value, reduced and more appropriate traffic speeds, and safer walking environments. So I want to talk about the map book that was in your packet. It showed the different buffers of where trees can go and where trees can't go. And I want to clarify, the red buffers show where new trees can't go. It's not talking about existing trees. Existing trees will stay where they are. So this is just showing you where we can't put new trees. So some of that criteria is pedestrian passageways of at least 48 inches must be maintained per ADA standards. Trees shall be at least 30 feet from traffic signals or stop signs and cross-street right-of-way. Where speed is 25 miles per hour or less, trees need only be 20 feet from cross-street right-of-way. Trees shall be at least 15 feet from alley right-of-way, driveways, wires, and cable TV. Trees shall be at least 15 feet in front of regulatory signs and 10 feet behind. Trees shall be at least 20 feet from street light poles and 10 feet from other utility poles. Trees shall be at least 10 feet from fire hydrants. Trees shall be at least five feet from underground water, sewer, gas, electric, telephone, and cable TV services, and at least 10 feet from underground utility vaults. And when trees are mature, the limbs shall be trimmed to maintain a minimum of 10 feet clearance from the lowest limb to the street. So this program, we will publicize it through Eureka Main Street and the city. We'll be using the Keep Eureka Beautiful postcards and doing personal contact. The timeline is to begin next spring. Keep Eureka Beautiful will begin the program. The timeline is to begin next spring. Keep Eureka Beautiful will begin the program. Between fall twenty twenty and spring twenty twenty-one, they're going to plant or replace fifty trees in the district. Summer twenty twenty-one, they will monitor tree maintenance. Spring twenty twenty-one to fall twenty twenty-two, outreach to the remainder of properties. Summer twenty twenty-two, continue monitoring, and then fall twenty twenty-two to spring twenty twenty-three, plant or replace fifty more trees. Sydney and Caltrans maintenance issues are being resolved. And I specifically want to thank Michelle McKeegan. She's here in the audience in Keep Eureka Beautiful. She is the reason this is happening. She went block by block and mapped where the trees should go. She worked on this for months. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and Michelle's here in the audience if you'd like to ask her any questions.
Councilman Allison?
I just have a question about future maintenance of the trees. Who would be responsible for that?
The property owner.
The property owner would.
It's my understanding. Michelle, do you want to join me?
It would be essentially the same arrangement we have with residential, uh, tree owners.
Okay.
Well, now that you're here, Michelle, you can, you can say something if you'd like as well.
Well, I, I guess I just wanted to summarize, um, the, they have the list of all the tree spots, or do they?
They have the map book with all the tree spots, yes.
I wanted to just summarize it. First, I think we need to make it very, very clear that it is voluntary. I don't want anyone to think they're going to be forced to have a tree. But there are about two hundred addresses with room, where, where there are room for about two hundred and fifty trees. The spots do meet the city requirements for setbacks that, that, um, we already talked about, but they may not work in terms of underground lines. We don't know what's under there. Also, property owners may, may be concerned that, um, trees would hide their storefront or that, um, they don't want to clean up leaves or that sidewalk problems might occur. So, so we do not accept, expect in any way that two hundred properties are going to want to have trees.
Councilman Royal?
What? Is there something outside? Sorry, there's just a noisy conversation going in the hallway that we're finding very distracting, but, um, unrelated to that. Does this, so I, I had a couple of questions. One is that, of course, I love this. It's no secret that I love street trees, and, um, but I saw the map book, um, shows properties in, in, you know, the Old Town and Downtown area, but then the, the map you showed of the entire district also includes other areas that are not featured in this map book. So is there a second phase of the, um, Cultural District Street Tree Master Plan that could be forthcoming after this? The outline of the Cultural Arts District is larger than this.
I think you're just thinking of like the Blue Ox area. Is that the other part?
Well, there's like a connector between here and there. There's like a strip, and that was the, the strip that I was thinking of potentially. Is there interest in planting trees in that area as well?
We would like to plant trees in this whole city, uh, so, so, yeah, if there is interest in that, we can plant trees tomorrow. I mean, there's, there's no reason to delay on that.
Do you, could you pull that map back up? It was the first or second slide. I just wonder, Michelle, if you and Keep Eureka Beautiful would eventually want to consider that area that's basically between that Blue Ox property and where this plan ends, which is at Inn Street? I mean, it doesn't seem like it's very big. But it's not nothing either. Do you, do you see the area?
Yeah, we could toss it in.
I wonder if, I don't know, I know that this was a very time-intensive process, though, to go through and map where all the places should and shouldn't be, so I, I'm wondering if that's a, a, an amount of legwork that you're willing to do later and add on to this plan.
Sure.
Okay, well, I would, I would certainly be interested to see and have a chance to look at those options, too. And will this, uh, my second question was, will this, um, having a master plan assist you in any way with funding? Or, um, or is it really about identifying where they should go?
We have a very generous, um, funder in, uh, the Berg Foundation, and they have said that if, uh, if we increase the number of trees that we want to plant and, uh, that are, we are requested to plant, that they would very much consider, uh, raising their level of support, so.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Well, you know, CalFire is still always emailing me to tell me they have that money.
And would you like to tell everybody what kind of trees they are?
Well, um, we've, the city tree list is actually very long. It's, it probably has a hundred trees on, well, maybe not. It probably does have about seventy-five or eighty trees on it. There are certain trees that are more popular, um, like ma- magnolias, maples, um. Help me.
Strawberry tree is quite popular these days.
Tristanias. Yeah, yeah.
The cherries.
Cherries are really popular. In, in the, in the spring, everybody wants a cherry. In the fall, everybody wants a maple.
I just thought it'd be nice if people can kind of visualize the, the options that were out there. I thought there were only a couple of them. I didn't realize there was so many. Councilman Burgel?
Are sycamores on that list?
Yeah. Oh, well, they're on the city tree list. Um, we don't really recommend them except for certain places because they, they do get really big. And, um, there are some, though, on the street down there by, um, the Ingamar Club.
Do we have any other questions up here? Do we, uh, do we have any comments from the audience before we move on? You can just kind of stand. We might need you again, so you don't have to get too comfortable sitting down. Is there anybody from the audience? All righty, seeing none, I'll bring it back for comments. Councilman Allison and Burgel?
I just want to also mention that, um, street trees also help with urban cooling, which helps make, you know, Old Town cooler in the summertime on hot days. Probably get hotter. It's decades go on. And it also helps, uh, with carbon sequestration, too.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out, Councilmember Allison. So, um, I support this. I just, I, I am a big fan of street trees, too. And when this was brought forward, um, a couple of things came to mind. We just had the meeting with the Broadway, uh, corridor, and the general consensus of that meeting was Broadway is ugly. We need something. And so, um, Lost Coast Outpost actually has this beautiful tree, beautiful picture right now as our cover photo of sycamores that are planted in Willa Creek, um, that my mother-in-law actually, former mother-in-law actually designed, which it's absolutely beautiful. So I'm hopeful that we can actually move this forward even on down the line to, uh, to Broadway when we're done, or maybe not even when we're done here, but even coexisting. Because trees, not only are they fabulous, they are traffic, they're used for traffic calming, they're used for climate change, and again, the aesthetically, they're just aesthetically beautiful. Now, one of the things that I noticed under tree maintenance is it says nevertheless, our greatest concern is watering, and it seems to be a barrier that creates problems for our community. They don't want to, you know, they don't have time, especially business owners and that type of thing. And I'm wondering, uh, maybe this was a question, but if there might be a way to partner with someone like Uplift Eureka, Inclusion Works, because they're out working in the environment all the time, um, to do those specific waterings. So just as a consideration, um, to get those things done without having to actually engage the business owners, not in a residential zone, but protect, I'm thinking potentially of especially Broadway and some of the local businesses in Old Town.
Absolutely, we, we can explore that. Um, but I, I think we should be aware that for, for the last four years that I've been involved, and I think well before that, the city and Caltrans have been negotiating over who's responsible for, for, um, planting, uh, for maint- maintenance on, um, on the Broadway, on the Broadway and Fourth and Fifth Corridor. And, uh, they have not agreed, and I see no reason to think that without some prodding from the council, they will agree because it's been going on forever. And there, and there are, uh, there are five landowners right now on, on Fourth and Fifth who want trees. And about once a year, I write to them and say, well, there's been no progress. Sorry. So I really think we need to resolve that because of all the streets that need trees, it's Fourth and Fifth and Broadway.
Absolutely. Well, and that's, that's again why I brought this forward as, you know, instead of having this banter back and forth with, because it has been going on since I was on the Transportation Safety Commission, and that's been a long time ago, well, not that, a long time ago. And so if we had a program where people are actually, we're supporting people into learning how to work and creating better, I mean, it's a win-win. I could see on Broadway and Fourth and Fifth, you've got people in Inclusion Works and in, um, Uplift with their vests on, taking care of these trees, and those are busy streets, and people going by and honking and being grateful for their work, and that's a self-esteem builder. There's just so much benefit from partnering with these kinds of things. I'm just throwing it out there as an idea, um, but it's something that I, that I want to continue to, to talk about, so.
Councilman Messner?
Yeah, thank you very much, Michelle, and I, um, I appreciate, too, um, one of the things that Kim, or Councilmember Burgel, mentioned about Broadway is I think what you're saying is property owners would be responsible for trees in these areas. So, um, the property owners that own businesses in, on Broadway, wouldn't that be the same? Thing? Well, I, so I don't understand what the problem is with the city and the.
The problem.
And, yeah, but maintenance is part of the deal with property owners, too.
The problem is.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The problem is that, um, until, um, this issue of who is responsible for maintenance on, on the corridor is resolved, uh, we are not being allowed to plant trees.
But this proposal is that the trees would be, um, a part of the property owner's responsibility, not the city, not Caltrans, so.
Nevertheless, we have to get.
Do I need to address, I mean, do.
Permission.
Does the council need to meet with Caltrans and the city? I'm just curious. What, what's the problem? Brian, you want?
Keep coming. Don't just hide behind the wall. We all saw you.
You want me to raise it a little bit?
Um, so it's a little bit more complicated than just tree maintenance. Um, the, when Ms. McKeegan, uh, said how long the contract negotiations have been going on, I think she probably was underestimating it. It's probably been, Director Slattery could correct me, but something around ten to twelve years probably is, yeah, at least ten years. But that being said, we've made a lot of headway. We have a draft agreement that's gone back and forth, and like I said, it doesn't just have to do with trees. It has to do with who's responsible for maintaining sidewalks, who's responsible for paying for electricity for traffic signals, who's responsible for painting crosswalks both in the right-of-way and on the side streets, all of those things. Uh, we've made a lot of good progress. We've got a draft. Now, the most difficult thing is how do we handle, uh, the actual installation of the trees? When the city is issuing an encroachment permit to do that, it's a very straightforward process. We work with our streets crew to do the cutting of the holes, and then the Keep Eureka Beautiful volunteers, dig the holes after the sidewalk's been cut out. In the Caltrans right-of-way, it's a little bit more complicated, and what the Caltrans district staff wants to do is develop a framework where they can have a standing encroachment permit, similar to what was developed for the Utility Box Artwork Program, where there will be a, a set of regulations that apply to all trees that go in. And it would, it would be a lot of the same things about tree species, locations, uh, you know, pruning heights, all of those things. And then in batches, the city would forward, um, specific installations, like some of those that have already been proposed by property owners in Keep Eureka Beautiful. And they would be processed in a batch. The problem is that Caltrans hasn't found an example statewide of a batch type of encroachment permit like this for landscape installation. And so they're having to develop it from scratch, and they're having to work with legal staff out of Sacramento to make that happen. And I think it's just as unwieldy and frustrating for them having to deal with their, you know, their higher-ups in Sacramento, as it is for the city in Keep Eureka Beautiful to be engaged in this back and forth for as long as we have. Uh, the other kind of wrinkle in it is that, yes, typically, property owners are responsible for tree maintenance when it comes to street trees. In the Caltrans right-of-way, we can't just say that's going to be the case because every property owner, when they needed to maintain a tree, would be forced to get an encroachment permit from Caltrans to do that. Uh, the standard encroachment permit application is somewhere like twenty-three, twenty-six pages, something like that, when you're talking about the state highway system. So because of that, uh, the city is agreeing for the purposes of this maintenance agree with, agreement with Caltrans to take on the responsibility for that tree maintenance. And then we will have a separate relationship with either the property owner or Keep Eureka Beautiful, some combination of the two, to, to sort of sub out that tree maintenance work under the city's umbrella. So that's kind of the background for you. It's moving, it's moving somewhat slowly, um, but it, it's, it's not stalled.
Does that, uh, did he answer what you wanted to say, Councilman Royal, or do you?
I was going to ask Director Gervin to come up and talk about that, so very well done. Um, so, yeah, I, I may have further questions, but I'll hold them.
I had a feeling that's what it might have been. Uh, Councilman Castellano?
Uh, I, I was going to just say something kind of similar, just also that maintenance is not only watering, but also pruning and, and things like that, and that's where, um, you may not want people like in close proximity to the highway, um, maintaining trees, um, you know, without training and, and knowledge of what they're, what they're doing. Um, I also just want to say thank you to, uh, Michelle and Keep Eureka Beautiful for your diligence and persistence and, you know, and also for continuing the efforts with Caltrans. I felt like the meeting, the Broadway corridor meeting, there, there was some promising conversation around trees in terms of part of the process of making that part of Eureka safer to bike bicyclists and pedestrians. So, uh, you know, I, I hope we continue moving forward on that.
Okay, Councilman Burgel?
So Director Gervin? Is there a way to separate the trees and get that moving forward and do this other thing in a bigger piece? Is there a way to take care of the trees and then do something different with this other piece?
Really, the, the other piece is what's further along at this point. It's the, the batch encroachment permit for the trees that is the, the more difficult issue at this point. For a long time, it, it was the other way around. We thought, okay, the trees should be relatively straightforward. There was a decision or a discussion of separating the landscape maintenance part of the maintenance agreement from everything else, but we've come to pretty good agreement on everything else, and now it's just this tree encroachment permit thing that's taking more time. So really, that wouldn't, at this point, provide any benefit for us.
So, um, as a.
Not done. So do you see any end in sight? Do you see a timeline? Do you see six months? Do you see a year? Do you see twenty years? Do you see fifteen more?
I don't see that, I, I hope. I think that, um, less than six months would be my goal. We are making really good progress over the course of this year, and then, um, our meetings in October. We have monthly meetings now with Caltrans, uh, management staff. It's been really productive, not just for this, but for project coordination and all other kinds of fronts. And, uh, October, uh, those meetings got canceled because of the PSPS events. So we're, uh, you know, it's, it's tricky this time of year with vacations coming and what have you. But I anticipate those discussions continuing, and I would hope that the next six months, we see something come to fruition.
Do you think it would be helpful at all to, for the council to send a letter to Caltrans thanking them for their efforts and telling them that we're watching this closely and we're really excited about trees?
That may be. Um, I, I think that the district staff is, they completely understand.
I thought maybe they could share that with their bosses.
They get it.
Say, here, look what we got.
It couldn't hurt. It couldn't hurt.
Would we, would we like to, um, write such a letter thanking them for their efforts and telling them how enthusiastic we are about them reeling up?
Directing it to Sacramento might be a good, good plan. Also, making sure they're included in the letter so that, you know.
So I'm a little gun-shy about it because, um, I've had recent experiences, um, not with my city hat on, but where, um, we've asked, um, gone through district staff and then, um, gotten really bold and written a letter to Sacramento and got shut down. Um, and, and I, I do wonder, uh, based on your judgment, if you think that this slow but steady process is better to continue engaging in rather than saying like, hey, can we do this thing that no one? that no one else has done? Please and thank you, and right now? Because I'm worried that that might result in a big fat no.
I think that's a really good point. I feel like the district staff, the deputy director of maintenance operations, the deputy director for planning, they're trying to help us through this process, and they're trying to be creative about it. And I do kind of share that concern that maybe they're being more creative than the higher-ups in Sacramento realize they are. And, and that might not work out well for us if we push the issue.
But I do wonder if now that we have this, you know, obviously, we haven't voted on it yet, but should we pass this master plan tonight and adopt, well, I guess we're just receiving a report. It's already been made.
Yeah, been it.
But if this could be seen as a pilot project while the rest of it is still being finalized and developed, I don't know if they're receptive to that, but in my experience in the past, Caltrans has been receptive sometimes to limited scope pilot projects. And so this is an existing plan that's been very well documented with a community partner, and I just wonder if you think they might be receptive to implementing the part that's on Fourth and Fifth Street here while the rest is continuing? Do you think that has any merit?
I think it's worth talking with them about, for sure. And the other thing I want to point out, there are several dozen trees on the city street tree list. There are a somewhat smaller number on the Caltrans tree list, and the ones that are common between the two are very minimal. So on Fourth and Fifth and in the future on Broadway, it will be a relatively small number of species, less than 10, that are available, but still a pretty good variety and things that are also relatively popular.
Councilman Arroyo?
The rest of my comments were actually about our street tree list, which is a little bit of scope creep from our agenda item, but I do think, since it came up in this conversation, that we, it would behoove us to update our street tree list. I know it hasn't been updated in a really long time. There are some trees on there that are just really not a good fit for Eureka, and some where it's really obvious around town that they have not been a good fit as street trees. So I think it would really be great to update that list and to maybe sync it up with Caltrans' list a little more where appropriate. And then I also wanted to note, you know, when people talk about street trees just something to consider, is that so many, so many times, people want, they want that look that downtown Willow Creek has, where it's all the same kind of tree, like, they want consistency, and a lot of business owners on Broadway in the past have voiced that. I know several iterations ago of Broadway planning, we talked about street trees and what people wanted to see, and they wanted to see the same kind of tree, creating this, like, beautiful effect of sameness, despite all the signs and buildings and everything looking so, so different. It creates this beautiful look. That said, that's a little bit bad for tree health because of pests, and a lot of these are not native trees anyway. They're not necessarily invasive trees, but they're not, they're not native, and so they're subject to pests at an even higher rate. And so just something to think about is, as we're talking with people about street trees, to, you know, provide examples where there is a mix of trees visually when we start talking to, you know, community members about this. It's helpful, because otherwise, people get the impression that the entire street is going to be lined with magnolias or whatnot, and that's actually really bad for the tree's health, so just, sorry, getting excited about street trees.
Any other comments? This is a lively discussion about trees. Thank you very much. This was like most, we got most of the grilling on the street trees. I'll bet that's not what you expected when you came in today. Thank you.
I will say that, yeah, we can absolutely work with community services staff, since they're familiar with some of the maintenance issues that have come up with our existing street trees that we are responsible for, along with Keep Your Eureka Beautiful and probably a landscape architect, to look at our list, review it, and see if it warrants change.
Thank you very much, Director Gerving, and Swan, and Michelle, for coming in and all the great work you guys are doing. The report has been received and vetted. So now we will move on to the next item, which is ranked choice voting. And Pam, you're gonna make us do a brief reminder of what this is, and then we will have our discussion.
Yes, a brief reminder. So back in June, you will remember that our residents and citizens, Tamara McFarlane and Caroline Griffiths, provided to you a report on ranked choice voting, and it was very extensive, and they gave you a lot of good information on why they were proposing that the council consider it. Council directed staff to review the information and bring back an item for council consideration on if this should be a charter amendment and if the city wanted to go forward with it. The city attorney's office and my office reviewed the four cities in California that have ranked choice voting and their charter amendments and how they've done it. We have clarified the process, which requires two public hearings for a charter amendment, and then it would be put on the ballot in November of 2020 for consideration. Both Tamara and Carolyn are here, if you have any questions specific to ranked choice voting, and I know that they can answer those. And at this point, staff is seeking direction to draft the proposed charter amendment language and schedule two charter amendment public hearings to place the amendment on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot.
All right. We want to start with some questions. Councilman Arroyo?
So I got a boatload of questions about this one. I think because of the way it was framed on the agenda, perhaps folks read the suggested action, but not the additional information about it. So could you clarify that we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be adopting ranked choice voting by doing this, it's simply putting it on the ballot?
Yes, that is correct. And actually, for this point of the process, you will be drafting, directing us to draft the language, hold the public hearings, and then there would be a separate action after we do those items to put it on the ballot for 2020.
Okay. And the framing of that, like, the framing of how it would read on the ballot would be relatively neutral, right? We wouldn't be saying, the city of Eureka wants you to vote for this, right?
I'm gonna defer to a city attorney.
In some way.
No, I think the process would be that we would prepare at least one alternative and possibly two or three alternatives in terms of the approach to ranked choice. You would then decide which one you would like to send to the voters. I'll just give you an example of different directions. One would be a charter amendment that would effectively put ranked choice voting in concrete. As a charter provision, the city of Eureka will have ranked choice voting going forward. Another approach would be to allow the city council the power to implement ranked choice voting, whether on a simple majority vote or a four-fifths vote. That could be implemented and then changed. So there, there would be some policy choices, looking at the wording, and that would be your decision. And then that wording would be subjected to these public hearings and eventually placed on the ballot, if you so choose, after the public hearings. So the, the, the nature of the decision put forward to the voters would be your call, but the decision to adopt or not adopt would be their call.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And then with the, are you aware of any issues with ranked choice voting in the cities that have adopted it? And maybe this is a question for Carolina Tamara as well. Is it, is any element of adopting it more costly for the communities that implement it? That's a question that a member of the public posed to me today. And I thought about it and thought, you know, it would make sense that potentially reviewing the ballots would be more labor-intensive or something like that, if they needed to be hand-counted or hand-verified or something like that. So I'm wondering if there are any associated costs that are greater with ranked choice voting.
I might say that what we have looked at, the, the recommendation from those communities that have adopted it, is that there really needs to be a fairly intensive voter education process, so that people understand how to handle their ballots and the mechanics of actually casting votes in first, second, and third preference, that sort of thing. The thinking being that once you're, there's some expenditure involved in that, but once you're through that, after one or two election cycles, then people get the hang of it.
I would also add that the county of Humboldt is, we consolidate our election with them, and they actually count our votes, and there's a charge for running the election. And I haven't asked them what that charge, if there would be an additional cost, but that would be something we can bring back to you.
Councilwoman Castellano?
Let's see. So I know, in addition to, in California, ranked choice voting has been actually kind of a staple in Maine for a very long time. Could you, Tamara and Caroline, explain why communities choose ranked choice voting, what it does, and kind of maybe overview, like, why you're bringing it to us, or why you kind of brought this to us in June?
So I, in addition to being a resident of Eureka, am here on behalf of the North Coast People's Alliance, and we do, and one of the things that we do is work to educate and empower people to take part in local government and civic processes. And that is a reason why this has been implemented in other places, that it opens up, it has been proven in places where it's implemented to increase voter turnout, because people do feel like there are more choices and that those choices actually reflect their ideals versus having to choose just the people who are kind of put up by the establishment. And I believe that that's one of the main reasons why it has been implemented. It also increased diversity in candidates, because people who may not come from the traditional backgrounds to run for office will step up, yes. And it has led to nicer campaigning, less negative campaigning, because people are looking less to vilify their opponents and more to boost up their own selves, their own campaigns. Does that answer your question? Yeah.
And then, Councilman Arroyo, did you have a third thing you wanted to say?
I just wondered if you could speak to that question about whether you know if there are additional costs associated with it from the research that you've done, or the examples that you're familiar with?
The only additional costs that I've heard of have to do with the technology involved, and since the county of Humboldt has had to recently purchase new voting machines, and they've assured that the ones that they're purchasing will be compatible with ranked choice voting, I don't think that cost will be associated with it. I don't know in terms of any sort of, like, hand-counting, or if, like, printing on the ballot will be different. I'm kind of ignorant as to how you are charged for elections anyway. So if they're charging you by the space you're taking up on the ballot, then yes, this will take up more space on the ballot. But we'd have to have more of a detailed conversation with the county elections, I believe. And the education campaign, I think, is a big part of it, too. That is really the main argument against it that I've heard from people, is that it takes, that it takes time to educate people, but I think that people are educable, and if we do that work, they can pick this up pretty quickly.
Since you're speaking to it, and not everyone watching right now or in the room might be super familiar with it, could you recap just briefly? I mean, it's basically, basically what ranked choice voting is.
Yeah. Do you want to say anything? I'm kind of hogging the microphone. Okay. So it is essentially ranking your choice of candidates. I like candidate A best, but if candidate A doesn't win, I would be happy with candidate C, and then, you know, I put B in there, you know? And then whoever gets, if, if not one candidate gets a majority in the first vote, then the candidate who has the least amount of votes, their first choices are thrown out and their second choices are applied. And that continues to happen until a candidate wins a majority of the vote. And that is one of the big reasons behind this, is to ensure that people who are elected have actually got the backing of the majority of voters. Whereas now, many elections, I don't think any of you up here right now, but it does happen, when people are elected to office without getting a majority vote, because votes are split. Yeah.
I didn't get it.
So we didn't all get a majority, never mind. Yes, never mind.
Yeah, so it's really, like, the way that it is pitched is that it's as easy as one, two, three. You just rank your candidates in order of preference, and then those who are at the bottom, their votes get taken out and applied, their second-choice votes.
All right. Do we have any other questions up here? Do we have any comments from the audience on this particular item?
Hi, all of you already know me. My name's Ailee Lamb, and I just want to say that I support this, and I also think that we should look into publicly funding elections as well in the city, because even more of an issue is the way that money affects our politics and elections. So if that is also something that we can look onto, that would be great. But yes, I fully support this. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this item? All right. Seeing done, I will bring it back for comment and discussion and a motion. Councilwoman Allison, or, yeah, that's right.
Just to share an anecdote I saw looking into ranked choice voting. It was in Maine, and there were two people running for mayor, but they were running together against other opponents, but it was really interesting seeing how they're, you know, saying, hey, vote for me, and vote for me, too, if you like me, kind of thing, or it was very a positive campaign, and it really displayed the positivities of what ranked choice voting can do. And I, I support this. And if anyone doesn't want, doesn't mind, I would like to make the recommendation to direct staff to draft a charter amendment language to allow for ranked choice voting and schedule two charter amendment public hearings.
I'll second. Any discussion? Okay, Councilmember Burgele?
So I appreciate all the work that you ladies have done on this, and I think it's, it's really important to look at new avenues and different ways of doing things. And I think that any time that we can engage the public to make these kind of decisions, I think it's really important. And I think the education piece is going to be critical, so that people can understand in moving forward. That's why I support this. I really believe that, that the public, when educated, that they will be able to make the right choices for our community. So thank you again for all you do.
Any other, Councilman Arroyo?
I think this is a very intriguing possibility, and I, I personally would enjoy being able to vote this way. I know that some of the comments I've gotten about this so far, well, first of all, people thought we were just gonna go ahead and do it without putting it to a public vote, and so I wanted to make sure that was abundantly clear. Admittedly, when I thought about a majority, I thought, oh, the greatest number of votes. So you're talking about 50% plus one, which is a much higher standard to me, and so that's why my sleepy brain said, said what it said. But, you know, I do think the public education, you know, component, should this be adopted, is something substantial, and I would hope that there are community-based organizations, North Coast People's Alliance potentially being one of them, but also, you know, hopefully organizations that don't take positions in elections to also help us, like League of Women Voters and other organizations that are present in the community, because I think it would be a big change for people and a learning curve the first time around. In concept, I think it's simple, but then looking at the math, you know, and once election results are rolling out and understanding what the implications are, I think it's going to be a learning curve for folks. So, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of putting this to the voters and seeing what people think, and, and coming up with some clear language that explains the basics of how it works, and, and then we'll go from there. But I hope that we would have partners in that process, so that, because it is already a little bit, it was, it was an interesting process to run this time and explain the ward-based voting. That was also relatively simple, but it was also confusing for people because it was a change and because they were accustomed to, you know, I think many people showed up at the ballot box thinking they were gonna vote for every, every ward, and were surprised to, you know, despite, you know, months of talking with voters, there were still some people who didn't know that. And so I wouldn't be surprised if it was also a big learning curve, should this be implemented. So anyway, I hope we could partner with community-based groups to get the word out. Thanks.
Any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
And with that, we are going to move on to our city manager report, where I believe we are gonna have an update from our community services team.
That would be correct. Community Services and Jeff Davis.
Good evening, council and mayor and city manager Sparks. So I...
So I am here tonight to provide an update on the Uplift Eureka program. On the October 1st council meeting, I, we showed a 17-minute-long video on Uplift Eureka and all the different things that it has been doing. And since then, we have continued all of those programs. We have continued our job skills training program where participants receive training in multiple topics such as workplace safety, proper use of personal protective equipment. They're also trained on how to use a particular pieces of equipment like string trimmers and leaf blowers. They also receive not just the training, but really the, the skills and, and the experience and confidence that really, and the confidence that really makes them more competitive out in the, when they're searching and seeking for employment. We've continued the co-pilot program where we have community volunteers that are recruited, trained and vetted through city staff to kind of be like a one-on-one helping hand, almost a mentor position for, for participants in our program that meet with them weekly and, and help connect them to, to vital resources in the community. And we also had a Pathway to Payday. It happened to be during the week of the League of Cities, so I think a few of you missed out on, on that. But we are, we are planning another one coming up and we'll give you details on that. And also, we've started holding, between Pathway to Paydays, having kind of many resume building workshops so folks can come in and drop in and do that. We have revamped the, the job skills training program a little bit to really focus more on the training aspects. We still do go out and conduct city beautification projects. We go out and do a lot of, of cleaning, graffiti removal and landscaping and trail maintenance. And really since, since the October 1st meeting, we were doing a lot, a lot of great things. But I think the biggest thing is we've kind of are dipping our toes into the housing assistance realm. We are currently, we're continuing to utilize the Measure Z funding for our homeless outreach workers. And really since the, the October 1st meeting, we have been utilizing our HEEP grant funding, the Homeless Emergency Aid Program, to provide housing assistance for community members. Since October 1st, we have helped place 24 people into permanent housing. And so 24 is, is, I think in a month and a half is a pretty decent number, but these are 24 community members. These are families, these are veterans, these, one case, it's a woman and small children fleeing domestic violence. These are folks, some of the folks are suffering from disabling conditions and some of them are suffering from multiple disabling conditions. So these are really the most vulnerable community members that we are placing into permanent housing. We're doing this through utilizing that, the HEEP grant, like I mentioned. So before, in the 10 months prior to utilizing HEEP grant, HEEP funding, we were able to place nine people into permanent housing with the average person taking 23 weeks to get them into this housing. Since utilizing this funding and following the Housing First Principles, we're averaging about 3.7 weeks to get someone into permanent housing. Partnering with the county, with the, the county is administering the, the HEEP grant and really following the, the Housing First Principles has been very successful for us. And really it's, it's, you know, going out, helping folks obtain the housing, providing the financial support, and then also providing supportive services to those individuals to make sure that once they're in that housing, that they stay in that housing, that they don't slide back into homelessness. And it's not something that we just did on our own. I really need to say that as, as a city who are really pulling together on this, we've, we've received a lot of support from the police department. We've received a lot of support from human resources and we have received a lot of support from the finance department also. I have to give a big shout out to Gina. Gina Roden has been very, very helpful kind of expediting these because when you put in a check request, usually it takes a little bit of time. But with these folks that are community members that are living in the streets, they're living in emergency shelters, they're living in their cars, really expediting that process and getting those, those checks out to, to the landlords, really, I can't thank her enough for, for helping her with, helping us with this process. And so that was, you know, that's kind of the, the biggest thing we've been doing in the last month and a half is, is focusing on, on providing housing assistance and following the Housing First Principles. Moving forward, I guess one of the other things that we've done since the last, since October 1st, the last update, is we have prepared and, and applied for the, the CESH Grant, which is the California Emergency Solutions and Housing Program. And we were just informed, I believe it was last week or the week before, that we received an intent to, they're intending to award us that grant pending Board of Supervisors approval. And the review panel met and recommended that our proposal be funded, over $200,000 for that. $176,000 will be strictly for this housing assistance to get more folks into housing, which is significantly more than we received through HEEP. And so we'll be able to continue what we're doing. With that CESH Grant, we're also going to be able to hire on a housing support specialist. So that'll be a temporary, part-time city employee that will be able to go out and provide those supportive services to those individuals that, that are in the housing that we helped place them in. So yeah, it's a pretty, a pretty exciting time with Uplift Eureka. Like I said, we've been doing really housing assistance for about a month and a half. And I think we've, we've started, started to demonstrate our capacity. We've, we're awarded a, a second grant. And we're also looking forward and we are kind of preparing a proposal for the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program, the HHAP Grant, which is another one that it, it has the opportunity to provide us with, with a lot of funds to really help our community members who need it the most. We are looking into developing new homeless prevention programs. We are looking into coming up with more homeless youth programs. There's a lot of youth that are in the foster system that once they age out, they're kind of just left on the, you know, on the, on the streets. So we really are, are looking into developing programs to, to help those community members who need it, who need those services, as well as landlord incentives and a lot of other things to really help this, this, this program move forward and help these community members. So yeah, within a month and a half, 24 folks in permanent housing is, is pretty, pretty good. But that's just kind of the tip of the iceberg. We're just really getting, getting started on, on this and we're looking forward to utilizing all these different grant options to, to continue this. I mean, in, in addition to that, we've also been working on our, our shelter app. So folks can utilize this app to see in like real time how many different beds are available in the different emergency shelters throughout town. I believe tomorrow, the, the rescue missions will both be going live with this. And I believe by the end of the week, the Blue Angel Village will go live with this also. And then we are working with the police department and moving forward with the diversion program as well. We hope to have a pilot program in place by the beginning of the year. So yeah, we've been, we've been a little busy since October 1st. And like I said, it's, it's, it's not just something that we're doing over in community services. It really is, is a, a team approach and with all the different departments in the city and, and also with teaming up with, with the county, we really are, I think, making some, some good progress. And so I don't have a whole bunch of numbers in front of me, but I would like to introduce someone who does have some numbers. This is our newly promoted homeless services program coordinator, Brandy Wheeler.
Thank you, Jeff. Hello, everyone. I don't have a whole lot of numbers, but I do have a whole lot of notes. Sorry, thanks. So as he spoke about Pathway to Payday, the next one is happening December 9th through the 12th from 10 to 1 at Betty Chen's Day Center. Be on the lookout for your emails because you will all receive an invite. Our past events have been incredibly successful, garnering over a 90% success rate for either a second interview or a job offer. At the August Pathway to Payday, we had five Uplift Eureka participants. Of that five, there were six second interviews, invitations and two immediate job offers. And I just want to briefly say, I don't know if it's appropriate, we will miss Mr. Sparks at Pathway to Payday because every one that I've been to, except the last one, I've seen him there. So I really appreciate you coming out to support that. Until two weeks ago, I was the co-pilot coordinator, co-pilot program coordinator specifically, which pairs, Jeff already spoke about it briefly, but we pair community volunteers with homeless participants in a one-on-one setting. And we currently have 23 co-pilots and six have been trained since August, six new co-pilots. I'm already compiling a list for new community members who have reached out, who are interested in training. So if anyone here, any of you are interested in being a co-pilot, yeah, feel free to fill out an interest form on the Empower Eureka website. And I think that's all I got.
Can I ask a question? So when you say a co-pilot, that sounds a little bit overwhelming. What's the time commitment for something like that?
So ideally, as far as longevity, ideally it's a long-term, but as far as on a weekly basis, I originally, when I, before I got this position, I applied to be a co-pilot in the pilot program. And I thought it was going to be a much larger commitment than it actually is. So you meet one hour a week with your participant and then we have a monthly, one and a half-hour meeting just amongst co-pilots to basically problem solve, discuss challenges, wins. We have guest speakers now. So an hour and a half monthly for the co-pilot meeting and an hour a week to meet with your participant.
Thanks for that clarification. I've had people ask me and it's been a concern, so thank you.
All right. I think that wraps up the presentation and staff is available for questions.
Or comments because this is just a manager's report. So you guys could say whatever you want. Yes.
So I am just so grateful for all you guys do. And one thing that I really noticed in your presentation that I really appreciate is that you were talking about our community members, our community members. These are friends of our community. These people that live in our community and they're not all categorized by one box that some people like to put them in. These are a variety of different people and they're seeking and they're looking to be a part even more of our community. And I just so appreciate that so many people, Councilmember Castellano was a co-pilot, are willing to step out and take that time to support someone into a different way of living and to treat them like a human being and like a person and spend some time. Because, you know, we can throw money at anything, you know, all day, but it's that connection, it's that support, it's that knowing that somebody cares just a little tiny bit about you when you don't, that makes a huge impact. So I just so appreciate everything that you're doing and you know that, but I just, I'm so grateful. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilman Arroyo?
I'll echo that. I have, I've spoken with a number of folks who are co-pilots and who felt like overwhelmed by the issue of homelessness in Eureka. And in serving the community as a co-pilot, felt like they could take some steps with one individual to help show them that they're cared for and also help them meet new goals and, and get into a better place in their lives. So I've really heard that it's incredibly rewarding, but also that that effort of, of starting one person at a time is worthwhile. 24 is phenomenal. I would love to hear more details later, maybe not right now. I know we've already had our, our meeting. I would love to hear more details about how you've overcome some of the barriers that we've had difficulty overcoming in the past in working collaboratively with other partners. I mean, it sounds like some of this is just the city being able to take ownership and responsibility directly with our staff for what happens with residents in our community. But I'd love to hear more, you know, down the line about what else is working in this program. And then I also hope that maybe your next report could be during the mayor's announcements or earlier in the meeting. So some of the folks who tell us we're not doing anything to help with homelessness could hear those successes. So perhaps, you know, in January or February of the new year, that would be great to hear. Thank you. That's it.
Yeah, I just want to mention that the, with the co-pilots, the participants who utilize that, that program, they achieve more milestones than the, the participants who don't sign up for the, the co-pilot program and that it happens a lot more rapidly, too. They, they, they meet those milestones much quicker. And yeah, I, I would, I would love to come here every, every month, update you on, on what's going on. And these, these housing numbers are just going to go up and up. And yeah, I would, I would, I would love to do that.
What I really love about it is the desiloing of kind of services. It's like you take a person and help them through all the workforce and the housing and, and, and that in itself is just a huge burden lifted from somebody who's trying to navigate services. So that ability to take them from step to step to step, I think, makes a huge difference. And just really, I'm just really proud of you guys. It's very, very cool.
Yeah, a lot of the, our participants, a lot of the community members are just, are faced with these situations that's really overwhelming. And just the fact that one person is willing to sit down and talk with them for an hour one-on-one is just, means, means the world to some of these folks. And, and yeah, it's just that, that personal touch, I think, is, is part of what makes this such a successful program.
Councilman Messner?
Yeah, thank you so much. This is, it's just something that we dreamed of, honestly, and just seeing it really come to fruition has been exciting and wonderful. And I also really appreciate the time, the timeline. I know it takes a lot to lay the foundation. And sometimes it feels like when you're laying the foundation, are we ever really going to see that success? But that 20, you know, how many was it? 24 in six weeks? Like, that's incredible. And it, it's because you guys did the hard work in the beginning, laying that foundation, really doing the things that it took. And, and I know there's, you know, sometimes that, there can be some fallout, too. But just appreciate you guys being really steadfast in that and just an amazing job. So thank you so much. This is a dream we've, I think, the majority of the council's been a part of for a while and we've been excited about. So thank you.
Councilman Castellano?
I mean, of course, like huge thank you just for, I mean, your effort, but also your vision to keep moving forward and kind of expanding what's possible within the program. I, I just really appreciate that you don't kind of reside in your success, you know, that you're like, okay, we did this and now, now it's on our horizon. And it's, it's really powerful and people in the community, I think, really feel that and, and see that. And the people you are supporting really see that and experience that. And I, I appreciate that you're working with the Housing First Principles. That's fantastic. I would love to see us kind of share this and celebrate it in a broader level somehow, you know, because I think it is such a positive story for Eureka and for people becoming, you know, more safe and, and a part of our community. You know, I mean, people who don't have homes are part of our community, but often they're so vulnerable that they don't get the opportunity to really grow as members of our community. So I think this also just has that, you know, kind of ripple effect, too. So thank you.
There you have it. Thanks so much, you guys. What a way to end the meeting. Well, no, it's not. Now we have council reports. But every one of them better be as inspiring as that presentation. That's all I'm saying.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
This is an agenda item and I would like to speak to it, please.
Oh. I don't.
It is an agenda item and I would like to speak to it, please. You know, I had the very difficult task of coming to you a little while ago when they applied for the HEEP funding and saying it's not Housing First, what they're doing with the money. And they now are. And that was so very, very, very difficult. But that's sometimes what you have to do, even with, that's, that is part of Housing First.
Think if that's a good way to end this. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, council people. Let's start with Leslie this time.
Okay. Let's see. I, oh, I was appointed to the Redwood Empire Division Housing Community and Economic Development Committee. So I look forward to kind of learning a lot about that and hopefully applying my efforts for Eureka and beyond. I attended the multimodal corridor plan public workshop. The Hour Waste Revealed, also the Hour Waste Revealed event, which is part of the City of Eureka Zero Waste Action Plan put on by EcoEureka, Zero Waste Humboldt, and Recology. put on by EcoEureka, Zero Waste Humboldt, and Recology, Keep Eureka Beautiful Meeting, the California Arts Council Cultural Arts District Rural Roundup, which was a meeting of all of the kind of representatives of rural cultural arts districts in the northern part of the state, along with some of the organ, board members for the California Arts Council. The, I helped organize a team to participate in the Against the Wind Festival's Nuclear Jeopardy, in which we won, the Eureka team won, you'll be happy to know, and we donated our winnings to Centro del Pueblo. I also met with Nora Mounts about a kind of West Side Eureka newsletter, so that's something that's in the works. So if you're a writer or someone who likes to talk to your neighbors in the West Side, contact me and maybe you could be a contributor to the newsletter. Also, let's see, I still, oh darn it, wait, can I find it? There's a, I'll just say generally, I still do a weekly art drop-in at St. Vincent de Paul on Wednesdays from 1:30 to 3:00, so come make art. It's open to anyone, it's free, there's art supplies. But also, St. Vincent de Paul is asking for donations of like kind of Thanksgiving Harvest Celebration food items kind of from now through the end of the year. So if you would like to make a donation of green beans or dried onions or, you know, those crispy onions or ham, you know, any of those kinds of foods, they would appreciate it. Also, monetary donations are great too. Thank you.
All right. I missed the last council meeting. I was leading a team of 37 to Israel, and some of you may have heard of the bombings that were there, but we were not affected, just took longer through the airport. The, but we had a great trip, and I'm sorry I missed it. I was not able to do a report on what happened at the League of California Cities, and so bringing that to you today. There was a Coastal Cities workshop that happened that I presented at, and we also broke into groups, and there are a number of our staff that were also a part of that, and cities around our state that are involved in coastal cities, where we talked about short-term rentals, sea level rise, and the LCP processes for cities, and how to interface with the Coastal Commission in a better way. And so that's something that we're working, I'm working very actively on, representing that this area of the coast. And then we have, on October 25th, I wanted to, since I missed the last meeting, I'm bringing some stuff from the past, EPD did a presentation that was actually really important, and it was a brand-new thing for our, for our state. This is the first one that's happened, at least in our area, and it was a unit commendation award. And it was a very powerful experience to be a part of that and see what was presented and how that team did in addressing a homicide situation and in helping save the life of one of the victims. And also making it possible for the team from, that were researching to find out who the, who the adversary was, being able to actually collect the data. They said it was really the perfect, the team did such an amazing job that they were able to bring the assailant to justice quickly. And so that was a really important thing, and I was so proud of our EPD as I am often with the work that they do. And so thank you for that. I also wanted to mention that the Henderson Center Holiday Extravaganza is this Thursday night from 5:00 to 8:00. And I know there's a couple other things happening too on Thursday night, but you could probably do some of, you know, some of each, so. But I did want to mention, because we were talking about some of this homelessness and housing and some of the ways we deal with that in our city, I just wanted to, I'm sorry that some people have left, but I just want to address that this, just since I've been on council for the past three years, we have, the CSAT team has been put into place. There, there's been huge changes at the St. Vincent de Paul. There's, it's a lot more positive environment and a lot of people are being served in a very positive way. There are four committees that I'm currently aware of that are addressing homelessness in our community, three of which I'm on. That's interfacing with the county, the community partners, as well as faith-based community. We've also helped open waterfront recovery, opened the Blue Angel, helped Betty's Village and Blue Angels Be Open. Uplift Eureka, as you just heard, is also another thing that has been implemented. We've helped the Eureka Rescue Mission get beds, more beds, so we can put more heads in beds for the homeless. And as even Councilwoman Castellano mentioned, that she's now on the community services, right? Housing Committee or the community services? Yes. So I'm on that as well, the community services. And these are things that are also just at the broader level, because the state is, this is a, really the entire state is facing these kind of issues around the commu, it's not just our community, it's around the entire state. And so this is just, we've done a lot in, and I think, I'm not, I'm not the only one, this is the entire group of council up here. And so we've worked really hard, not just the council, but also the staff. And so it's challenging at times to hear people get up and complain, but not stay to actually hear what we are doing. And I really appreciate our staff and the hard work that they've done and the work that our council is doing to make a difference in the community. And yes, we have problems, and so does every community. And so we are working to address those problems. And so I appreciate so much the things that we're, that people are doing, and thank you, Uplift Eureka, for presenting tonight, so people can understand the good work that we're doing in the community and making a difference. Thank you.
Well, this coming month, I'm stepping down from the Board of the Humboldt Trails Council, which I've served on for eight-plus years, so it's very hard for me to quit things, apparently, but I am, I am stepping down and leaving the organization in really good hands. And in the time that I've been on the Board, a lot of the goals of the, the founding goals of the Trails Trust of Humboldt Bay, as it used to be called, have been carried out or are in progress, which largely was the Bay Trail, a huge part of which was in Eureka. And the connection between the Eureka and Arcata portions of the Humboldt Bay Trail is forthcoming, so that is, I think, a big accomplishment. And the Great Redwood Trail Act was passed, and so there are a lot of opportunities there that I'm happy to have been a part of and also happy to have more time for different boards now. It's not like I'm doing fewer things. Nope, I'm not free. Don't ask me to be on your board, please. I held a, well, was part of a great conversation about opportunities for urban land trusts in the region. This is something that is certainly present in often bigger cities, urban communities in California, the LA area and the East Bay. And so a couple of folks from, Councilmember Castellano joined me, Director Gerving, and some community members, trying to talk about opportunities for tax benefits potentially and cooperative housing opportunities potentially in the sort of land trust model, urban land trust model. And I come to find out that Cooperation Humboldt are already engaging in some similar conversations, and I'm getting the ball rolling, so I look forward to hearing what comes from that, but it was really engaging to talk about and think about new ways of making housing affordable and retaining potentially historic properties with some potential tax breaks. So I hope that that will be some, somewhere where we grow opportunity in the future for housing. I do skate with Humboldt Roller Derby, and we are hosting a collaborative fundraiser with the Eureka Theater, so the Historic Art Deco Eureka Theater is always fundraising for its theater enhancements. And this Friday at 7:30, we'll be together showing Whip It, which is a movie, a fictional story about roller derby, but it's cute and funny. And if folks are interested, please come out. It's only six bucks to get in, and we'll have, you know, some fundraising elements for both organizations, but since that's in Eureka, at the Eureka Theater. Yeah, the Eureka Theater on F Street. I don't know the exact address, but it's F Street between 6th and 7th. And so again, that'll be 7:30 on Friday. And then lastly, it's interesting, we're all just touching on these kind of personal experiences around houselessness and our feelings about it, so I'll do mine. Upon getting back from being out of town for a month on Coast Guard duty, I, I ran into, I was actually just getting back, like literally just getting back into town and ran into a former student of mine, a former Hsu student, who in the course of a year graduated, was the first in their family to graduate from university and became homeless through a combination of debt and unexpected family circumstances. And I ran into them, first person almost that I saw upon getting back in Eureka, early in the morning, sleeping in a doorway. And so I talked to them and they were, they had kind of met up with some other people who were homeless and didn't really like them too much, but felt protected by them. So they had sort of fallen in with this crowd of individuals that they felt safe with, but not necessarily like they wanted to be with long-term in life. And I took my student, former student, out for coffee, and I ultimately ended up getting them a ticket on the Greyhound to get back to family, and that is where they are now. But it was very, it was a very interesting conversation, but what really struck me was that in the six months or so that the student had been homeless, they felt so much hate aimed at them that they almost, that just pulled them over. And emotionally, they were just totally a wreck. This was a student who was a very good student, very together, and hopefully is on, in a better circumstance now. And that's not something that I would, you know, I'm not like made of money, so I wouldn't just go around, you know, offering a lot of financial help to anyone I could, but their story was really moving, and I think they have a real chance to recover from this experience that was very traumatizing. And I could relate, and we talked, we had a really deep conversation that meant a lot to me about that feeling of how much hate is aimed at you. And I don't know about all of you, but some days I feel overwhelmed by that amount of hate that's even aimed at us, and we're not those folks on the street. So anyway, it really touched me. It really made me want to do more and do things differently, and it really jives with what we're hearing from Uplift Eureka and the fact that the City of Eureka is taking into our own hands the ability to make change on a case-by-case basis. So that's all I want to say. Thanks, and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
I just want to talk about that tomorrow, starting at 6:00 AM, there will be a 24-hour strike for NUHW employees at St. Joseph Hospital. Our union organizer has been in the area for the past week, desperately trying to contact administration to get back to the bargaining table, day or night, he said, and there has been no response from the hospital. So employees are going to go ahead and continue with the strike for 24 hours. So basically, everyone who is not a nurse, administrator, or doctor will be striking out in front of the hospital over unsafe staffing conditions and unfair labor practices and that, yeah, it's been months since the hospital has last met with us at the negotiations table, so that's why we'll be out there, we'll be out there for 24 hours. And if you'd like to support any of the hospital employees, join us on the picket line and wear red.
Councilmember Gao?
So I'll keep my report brief. I did a lot of things. If you want to know what they are, you can go on my council page on Facebook. I try and post everything that's going on in the city, what's going on around that I'm involved in and what other council members are involved in. I think it's important that we, we really look at the fact that each one of us and each, probably each one of you picks up an oar and, you know, tries to help out how we can, and I think that's super important. And I really just want to speak out, I know I already said this already, but I'm going to say it again, I really appreciated Natalie's story, because oftentimes I feel like, and I know, that people, you know, people are afraid of what they don't understand, and that's why it's so important to understand people's stories and to ask a better question. It's really easy to look at somebody and say, oh, that junky piece of garbage, never worth anything, and then to find out that that's somebody that you know's son, or daughter, or mother, or father. You know, just as a general rule, kindness is the way to go, and I would encourage all of us to behave that way. I know it's frustrating, I get frustrated too, but, you know, there's nothing that kindness can't make better. And there's a lot of work behind that as well, but, you know, it doesn't help to be rude and mean and call names. We're not in the third grade, we're grownups, and we want a better city. We've got to work together, and you can't do that when you're calling names and, and acting like children, so thank you.
And on that, this meeting is adjourned.